Okay.
Yeah, we were.
I'm ready to go, so call the order, any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, uh, is there any public, uh, I didn't see any in the room, is there any public online?
Not that I can see.
Okay. So move to approve previous meeting minutes, we have May eighth, May twenty second and July tenth. And I think Sarah, John, myself and Brendan were at all of those meetings or? Brendan, did you miss one?
I was at July tenth. Um, yeah, I think I would have been here in May.
You were here May twenty second, I just opened it up. And I thought I saw you on May eighth too, yeah, I saw you on May eighth too. And Abby was on May eighth, what's that? So Abby was on May eighth, May twenty second, everyone, everyone in attendance was there and uh, July it was just Sarah, John and myself. So, so I take a, a motion to approve the, the two May meeting minutes. And then any corrections to those and then Sarah, John and I can, we can take a motion on July, but we're the only three there. Well, I, I will see it for July. Anyway.
Um, you were?
Yeah, I think so. Oh, you were not, you're not on the minutes though.
Yeah, I don't have you listed on here.
Are you sure he was there in July?
I think so. Yeah, he was because under public comment, Brendan noted that the commission had discussed priority housing.
Yeah.
Your name's in here.
So Brendan has a correction.
We have a correction. So Abby wasn't there. So, so, all four, all four of you and myself were at the two May meetings. And everyone else, everyone but Abby was at the July meeting, so we can, we can, why don't we do a motion for the two May meetings and then a motion for the July?
Uh, I'll move in regard to the May eighth and twenty second meetings.
Okay, sir second.
Abby, second.
Okay, are there any corrections or comments?
Uh, just a small V on my name.
Oh, okay.
I thought it was gonna be something you substantially remembered from those meetings three months ago. So hearing nothing, uh, all in favor of the motion to approve the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining? Okay, now we go to July, some, someone wanna make a motion for the July minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any corrections, comments? Hearing that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, Abby, do you wanna abstain or do you wanna just? Okay. Perfect. All right, and I see Brett is here, hi Brett.
Hey, everybody.
Uh, let me see, oops, I gotta go to the current agenda, don't I? So we got, um, oh, election of officers, how exciting.
So our two new members aren't joining us today?
I thought they would be. I got all the materials and I sent them a follow up with like a primer on joining a new planning commission, this is what you should know about and open meeting law and all these things, so.
So, um, so is it, he's present here and two more, is that the full commission?
Yes.
Have you, have you announced, do we know who the new commissioners are or was today the day they were gonna introduce themselves?
Today was the day they were gonna introduce themselves, so.
You said who they were.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can you repeat who they were?
Yeah, cause.
Matt, uh, Matt Giles and, uh, Trevor Thomas.
School librarian?
School librarian, yeah.
They didn't show up.
Get my.
We'll excuse them for this first meeting, but tell them they better show up at the next meeting.
I got really excited about Matt, who was the second one?
Trevor Thomas.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so, uh, election of officers, we'll start with, uh, let's see, we need a secretary, right?
Yeah, we've never had one of them.
I don't think we've had one since I've been on the, since I've been on the commission.
Is anyone interested in serving as the secretary?
We could ask two new.
Oh.
Yes, it's a great way for them to get involved.
Yeah, all right, so let's move on to, uh, vice chair, Abby is current vice chair, um, but she may wanna unseat me as chair, I don't know, so, um.
Mike, isn't our turn up this coming June?
Yeah, but the, the office, th- this election is every year, so we, we didn't have.
It's so weird that we do it in the midstream.
We're doing it in midstream because we didn't have people there on, in July. There's only three of us in July. So we put it off.
Oh, you made midstream of the term.
Yeah, cause if we like change things up and then don't continue, sorry.
Well, I'm like on a different cycle to you, I'm a Euro.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To you. I think that might be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
And I think that's why they have it every year. Um, so, yeah, so kind of all measures all together somehow. Uh, but yeah, Mike is right that ideally we want to have the election in Ju- every July, so that way it matches up with renewal of terms and anyone that comes onboard, uh, newly. Uh, but I think there's some off alignment here with well, everyone was renewed in July, we only brought in the new members at the beginning of August and then now we're all here. So, since, this is why we're, we're having this item at this.
Yeah, happy to keep it or, or leave it if someone else is interested in vice chair.
I'm not.
Well, listen. So, so we get it together. Who's, who's interested in vice chair?
Abby.
Abby. Who's interested in chair? Does anyone wanna take my spot or do you wanna keep me sitting here running these meetings?
You did a good job, Mike.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, okay.
Does Mike wanna sit in the chair position?
What's that?
Do you want it, Mike?
I, I, I'm happy to do it, but I'm also happy to step aside.
We're glad you're happy to do it.
I mean, next year's gonna be radical.
Yeah, well, you know, I figured.
Yeah.
All right. So then it sounds like you wanna keep, you wanna keep, uh, Abby and I in our current position, so if someone wants to make that motion and second, we can elect it and we'd be done.
I will make that motion.
All right. Who's gonna second it?
I'll second it.
John, okay. All, any more nominations, I guess technically I have to ask that, any other nominations? See, seeing no one jumping up and raising their hand, I guess not. So all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Congratulations, Abby.
Congratulations, Mike.
Condolences, Mike, I mean, congratulations. No, I'm just, I'm just kidding, it's fine, it's fine, but, um, I will, well, we'll get on to it. Uh, sorry, so let's move to discussion of the comprehensive plan.
Right, so back in March, I provided a broad strokes overview of the update process for the municipal plan, comprehensive plan. Um, and now I'm coming back to you with a draft approach for how we wanna do public engagement. Uh, the city has done a lot of engagement over the last five, six years since the last comprehensive plan. So I, I did a little bit of a compilation of all the, the, the things that the city has done. What I could gather. And, and put it all together and then identified the gaps that, uh, we need to, to work on, uh, for engagement. Um, the gaps are, are pretty, pretty limited based on how wide reaching of engagement we've done over the last five, six years. Much of that engagement was through the equity audit and the follow up work with the equity audit. Uh, so, so the, so we still, I, we still need to do engagement as part of the comprehensive plan work. I think that it can be, um, a much, I would say a lighter approach compared to past comprehensive plan municipal plan updates. Um, and I, and I think it can be a bit more targeted, um, with how we wanna do the approach. Um, so, I think I can share my screen just to talk through, uh, the, the draft uh, engagement plan, uh, that you might, that you already have. I think it's mainly for my benefit that I wanna bring it up. Um, so looking at this, um, I, I see this as, uh, a multi-step process that's going to heavily involve you in every step of the process. Um, that, at first, right now, for this meeting, um, we, um, we should probably talk about the vision. Um, what is in the twenty nineteen vision, uh, does anything need to be modified in that, that vision? Um, workshop that a little bit, um, that vision will be workshopped by all the committees along with, uh, city staff internally. Um, so right now, I've already reached out to all the department heads and to figure out how we want to approach, uh, reviewing all the goals and objectives from the twenty nineteen master plan, identify which goals have been achieved, which goals are still ongoing, which ones are obsolete. And anything new that should be added in a draft form at this point to that, to that list. Um, and I think all of us should probably discuss that too, um, and so I will come back to you on all those goals and objectives and a status of that in November after I've talked to all the committees. Um, so that way we can review it all together based off of, uh, the information that they provide on what we've actually accomplished, so that's. Um, the vision statement as I presented to you, we can talk about that a little bit for this meeting. That's also been shared to all the department heads and then that will also be shared to all the committees and boards, so they can workshop it a bit and have those conversations and discussions in October and November. Um, that, all that information will be compiled by me, brought back to you sometime in November and December, that will discuss, discuss that time too. Um, so by the end of December, uh, going into January, hopefully, we'll have, uh, a draft, uh, vision that is better aligned with where we are today and where the city is today. Uh, a draft set, a, a working draft set of goals and objectives that, um, is created internally amongst us, um, that can then be presented to the public, uh, for, for feedback. Uh, so the feedback portion of this, I'm, I'm seeing this as in the form of community conversations in a series of open houses in which we'll present that working draft to the community, uh, have it focused on the major sections of the existing master plan that will serve as the framework for the current comprehensive plan. Uh, so they can provide, uh, feedback to those goals and objectives and those vision statements. Um, and I'm also in those open houses hoping to have a bit more of engagement and, um, maybe like a board or, or something more interactive on these particular, uh, aspects that we, that I found we don't have, either we don't have enough input on or the input that we have is obsolete. Um, so historic and cultural resources, uh, there's been a lot of work done on the historic resources and, um, identifying them, surveying them, putting them into the zoning and now, uh, regulating them. But during that process, there wasn't any, there wasn't much community engagement. Uh, so I think that, that's something that's lacking, uh, especially considering that last night we had, um, a historic resource, uh, local resource advisory board meeting, one of the applicants comes to the meeting and says, I didn't even know that my property was on this register. How, why are you telling me that I have to go through this process? And that's been a common refrain with applicants. Every time I reach out to them and, and tell them, oh, your property is on this register, you're gonna have to go through this extra step in order to get your. Um, so there, I think there needs to be more communication and outreach on that aspect. Uh, let informing people that their property might be on this register, that we have this register, that we are taking efforts to maintain, uh, the city's historic and cultural resources. Uh, and to get a better sense of what the city, uh, what community members value in, in terms of historic and cultural resources, which ones should the city prioritize? How should the city approach, um, maintaining, uh, preserving historic resources going forward? Uh, and, and getting a better sense of, uh, the, the sentiments of the community with the, the local historic register, because I think there's a bit of a, I think there's a bit of a disconnect with that because there hasn't been. So, or at least that I've.
It must outreach to almost everybody on that list, that was a while ago, Brett did a whole extensive stuff on that, so. But it might be a new owner, so it might be somebody who doesn't, isn't aware.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Going through that report, I mean, there's a lot of great information about the, the buildings themselves, but then once it got down to how was the community approached, it, it felt pretty thin to me. So I think, I think there needs to be a bit more conversations. Yeah, that was a big impact, yeah, yeah. So I brought it up with the board, with the local resource advisory board last night and, um, they're on board with this, they've been talking about how to, they wanna engage the community and talk about historic resources, how to educate people about their historic resources in the, in the city and getting people to understand what these resources are and how. So I, it, it meshes well with, with their, um, their vision right now too. So alongside with that, uh, I think the discussion about public safety, um, should, could be involved in this too, under uh, safe, healthy, connected people, um, economic development, um, we have the economic development, um, I forget what that entire title is called, the strategic economic development plan. Um, it's, it's still valid although dated. Um, it dates back to before the master, I wanna say twenty seventeen. So, um, strictly speaking in terms of, um, the validity of plans, it is obsolete. Um, but we still use it as a tool and it's still, uh, useful for planning purposes for the city. But I think that because that plan is a bit dated, there should be a, a, a broader conversation about economic development as part of this planning process. Um, and then lastly, the role of inclusion and belonging and implementation, I think that the, the equity lens, uh, could be, uh, tightened. Um, I bet there could be a better integration between the equity audit, the work of the equity audit, the work of the inclusion and belonging commission, um, the work that, uh, council has been working on with uh, with applying an equity lens into the comprehensive plan and then turning that into, um, more targeted implementation over time. Sidebar, keep in mind that the comprehensive plan is also a foundation for the capital. So anything in there is going to be important for, for the capital plan, um, going forward too and how we wanna, um, strategically make capital improve, improvements, capital purchases in the long term.
The capital plan meeting.
Um, so the capital plan is a framework for how to spend responsibly on large purchases like fire trucks, um, and, and sometimes police cruisers in, in some towns in Mississauga, but, but it could also be used for sidewalks, um, like Main Street is in our capital plan. Um, the, uh, I think.
So sort of looking at from a financial point of view?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yes, yeah. So if we have something that explicitly states in our plan that we want to make improvements in these particular aspects, um, then that will, that, then there's a, there's a nexus between the, the comprehensive plan and the capital plan and how we spend the money and make those improvements in the long term.
Um. Hey, hey, Rebbe?
Yes.
I, I just, I, I hope, I, I think it continues the conversation looking at the, that section you're on right now. Um, I'm just wondering, city staff, it's not just you, right, you're gonna involve other people, um? And I'm not sure who, like, public safety, I would imagine the police chief could be involved?
Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, and, and like John Rauscher maybe for municipal infrastructure?
Yep, yep, so earlier this week, I sent this out along with the schedule to all the departments. Uh, and, um, and I asked them and I told them, this is the next steps with the comprehensive plan, I'd like your feedback specifically on uh, on these four questions, uh, I'd like to meet with your boards. Um, and I'm scheduling time with, uh, all the boards and commissions, uh, in the city to, to talk about the goals and objectives and, um, and their feedback on it. So, yeah, it's not just me, it's, it's everyone in, in city staff.
Who, who's handling economic development, cause we used to have, um, a, a position there, I don't think that's there anymore?
That is an excellent question that I need to talk to Elaine about.
Okay, all right.
I, I've from my, uh, cursory understanding, it seems like Elaine is leading a lot of that. Um, so I think we'll have to talk about, uh, Elaine's role, um, downtown Winuski's role, uh, city council's role in, in economic development and, um, and how they want to interface with that.
Okay, and if I could go back a little bit more, I'm just wondering, um, you, you've got these community conversations, you're, you're planning. We're not talking about a total rewrite, right, or we're, we're talking about using this existing framework and tweaking it as needed?
Yep, exactly, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we've, we have a great framework, um, and it's a great model going forward. Um, there's going to I mean, considering that there's been a good amount of time since the, when the last plan was drafted, there's gonna have to be some revisions, but I, I, I don't expect doing a, a complete overhaul.
Yeah, I mean, I, I did look at, I'm not gonna say I read, but I looked at the, uh, report from, um, Sarah from CCRPC.
Mm-hmm.
Extensive and it looked like there was a lot of good, but she had a lot of, of suggestions too.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, Sarah Muskin and I have had some conversations about the plan and, and, and she's, uh, very much like, uh, yeah, take a lighter approach, you've got a good framework, you've got a lot of valid sections in here that are still current. Um, there's gonna have to be some revisions, there's been some, there's been statutory changes since then, since twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen that will have to be incorporated in the plan, but, um, overall, this is more, this should be and, and a more of a revision rather than an overhaul. And could, because we still have a, a very solid plan.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, um, yeah, going forward, um, hoping to hold, uh, some focus groups, um, with Winuski youth, with, uh, BIPOC business owners specifically, multilingual community members, um, mainly to, to capture, uh, a, a more representative sample of the community, um, that may or may not show up for the open houses, um. I understand that, you know, not, just like not everyone can show up at six, six thirty on, on a Thursday night. That, that might be the case too with the open houses too, so I think, um, having more venues, having more spaces that are, uh, more familiar and then having multiple options to provide input during this process during that time period is gonna be important, so.
Uh, my, 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 my sense is, and, and I don't know if this is true or not, but my sense is that we have more contacts in these different areas now than we had back when we did the plan last time.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean, I, I think that, that whole, um, communication process in terms of getting into these different groups has improved substantially since, was it two thousand nineteen or eighteen, whatever we were doing this before?
Yeah, that's, that's my, that's what I gathered too, it seems like, um, you know, a lot has changed since, since twenty eighteen, um, and, and I think we have a lot, we have more resources. It seems like than, than we had before. Yeah, Paul and I have been talking about this whole approach and strategy and how do we make sure that this plan captures, this process captures, uh, uh, representative, representative sample of the community and how do we do that?
They tend to keep the language as simple as possible, straightforward and not too many acronyms, not too many extra wording.
And going where people are already gathering, right, going to them instead of trying to get them to us.
Yeah, yep. Yeah. Yeah, um, so and then a part of all of this will be, um, work sessions with you, um, so going into that, uh, schedule, uh, zooming in a bit more, um, I've built in check ins, uh, with you and council. Um, so we're checking in right now, talking about this. Um, well, I'll check in again in, in October, provide a brief update on any, um, on, on any meetings that I've been to that I've, that I've scheduled so far. Um, so far at this point, I've only scheduled, uh, meetings with, um, uh, with Ray with Safe, Healthy Connected and his staff and then with, uh, with Jasmine and Housing Commission in October. Uh, so, so there's more to come during that time period, but by December, I should have, um, feedback from from staff across the board and all the boards and committees, uh, that we can, can work on uh, for those community conversations going into the winter. Um, and then, um, we'll start working together, um, throughout the early part of next year on, on putting together this plan, looking at the revisions and, um, uh, and piecing it all together. Um, so concurrent with all of this, uh, with all the out, with all the input, um, CCRPC is organizing all the data updates that we'll need to include in this plan. Um, so we have, um, I have, uh, I've been in contact with them about putting together all the data. So by, by March, April, uh, they'll have the data ready for us that we can review, plug into the plan um, and, and analyze a bit further, um, with the data that we have, input that we have, the goals and objectives that we want to achieve and and, and, and see if it all makes sense, right? Um, put together the targets that are, uh, quantitative, that are achievable in the, in the, in the eight year horizon. Um, and, uh, and tying together all three pieces, right, quantitative, the qualitative and, um, yeah, and, and, and goals and aspirations. Uh, yeah.
The Rebbe, I've got a, I've got a, probably a, uh, ignorant question, but, um, looking at the, the draft comprehensive plan schedule and the schedule you've got up on the board right now, I just wanna have those mesh.
Right, so I've made some small edits to that, let me pull it up. Um, the comprehensive plan schedule, so we have right here, um, so I've xed out the project kickoff meeting because we don't have a consultant on board, but we have the community assessment that is what CCRPC is going to be doing concurrently that they are gonna start on, uh, uh, in the next month or so. Um, then, uh, I, the, the review of past planning public engagement efforts is what's in, uh, your meeting materials under that draft. Um, public engagement approach, uh, implementation review as well, that's what's happening, um, with the review of the goals and objectives with, across city staff and, um, and boards and committees. Um, visioning and goal setting as well, um, that's what's happening right now and then through into the fall and, and early winter. Um, and then outreach and engagement, the beginning part, uh, within city staff, boards and committees and then um, going into, uh, the winter and into the spring, uh, directly with the public. Um, and then all of the meetings, um, with all the work sessions on putting together the plan with you into the spring and summer, uh, all of those will be public. Um, I'll work with Paul on making that more pronounced, so that way people know that they can attend these meetings and provide input, um, and, and try to focus the, the meetings a bit more saying that let's, we're gonna, we're gonna work on this particular section, so if you wanna talk, if you wanna put in some input on this particular session, email me, email Paul or, uh, or just attend. Um, so, uh, so that's part of this. Um, towards the, the tail end of, of next year, um, you would have your public hearings to, to review the revision and hopefully approve them, uh, and then we would pass it on to, to city council to, to review and approve and they would have to hold two public hearings before they can approve, um, the, the comprehensive plan. Um, the organization and drafting of the plan, um, again, that's, I'll be doing, uh, some of the uh, early work of looking at the twenty eighteen master plan, identifying language that maybe obsolete, could be tweaked, um, and then, um, keeping that in mind as we. could be tweaked. Um and then um keeping that in mind as we take in um public input in going to the early next year. Um and then putting that all together with you uh towards the middle of next year. Um and then, um yeah, I think that should cover everything here with the final review and adoption going into um next summer, fall, winter, and hopefully approval by March twenty twenty seven.
Good.
So Rebi, if you, since you're sort of the fresh eyes, cause we've been looking at the same master plan for quite a while. Um but what things kind of just generally you would say might be shifted or might?
Uh I've been like con, like wondering this myself a little bit. I think I looking at other um municipal plans that have been out recently, um I'm thinking, so South Burlington just updated their city plan. Um Burlington's in the early process of updating their their municipal plan. Um Essex just updated their, Town of Essex just updated their city, their their municipal plan. Um yeah, specifically, and then Milton's in the process of updating their municipal plan. Um thinking about plans that have recently been updated or are in the process of being updated. Um I think I I wanna have a section that is like a slimmer executive summary that's a bit more accessible, that just talks about the goals and objectives in a in a more uh accessible visual format, and then having the the real really wordy stuff in like a, in like an appendix and a secondary part. Um just so um the, what is uh like, what can be easily grasped by by you by community members, something that can be easily flipped through um in a much more short and condensed format. Um and that speaks directly to uh the work that you would be doing over the next ten years. But also making sure that that appendix that does meet all the meet, all the requirements set by statute is still accessible. So I'm thinking about s- splitting it a little bit that way still. Um so so just to, just to keep it more accessible and and more digestible, um.
So less about content except for things that we have?
Y- yeah, I mean, with content, um I think everything in the plan is is pretty solid. Yeah, um and and with content, there's there's a lot of elements that are that are just statutorily required, so it ends up reading the same across the board, across all municipalities. I think the difference between uh across municipalities is uh readability and format.
Mm-hmm.
Really, um and accessibility of of the document. Uh so and it's it's not only about having the document um visually available, but it's also about the breadth and scope of it, right? Like i- is is are people going to find a hundred and fifty-page plan unwieldy, right? Is there a way to put, to say that the plan is like forty pages, thirty pages, and then have that appendix that is uh that supplements it? That's that speaks to the plan, that can directly connect to those thirty, forty pages. So so that's, that's what I've been
Yeah.
thinking about.
So it's less about us scratching every single little element of it? hashing that out constantly and sort of just changing format, putting in things that are required?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I wasn't looking forward to like hashing out every single little thing, cause I don't think it's
I don't, yeah, yeah. I don't think that's that's necessary either. I think we can probably if if there are certain things that we want to hash out, just because we feel passionate about it, we can hash it out. But I don't think that we need to hash out every little thing. I think um I will probably do like a first run-through first red line and just look at the text and then try to figure out like what parts need to be updated statutorily, what parts need to be updated in terms of the fact that it's twenty twenty-five, and then and go from there. And then I think towards the tail end of this process, we'll talk about a little bit more about uh genre, format, and readability along. So so that's what, that's mainly what I'm Yeah.
I like the idea of condensing a section that you can be like here to the average person.
Yeah.
And the rest is if you really care.
Yeah.
I really wanna understand. I like that.
Cause I remember, um I think it was Ruth in one meeting, she she sort of said at the end, do you think you could make sort of a summary of that so we could understand it? And that's just stuck in my mind. Obviously, that's what you're addressing too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's, it's funny, cause I mean, the Winuski plan is one of the thinner municipal plans compared to other municipalities. But even then, the 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 it still feels uh like overwhelming in a way, because it just has so much information all at once. Ben, and I think that there's a, there's a way for us to just say, these are our goals and objectives. And if you want to know why, there's all of this information, and we can directly connect it to the why.
Yep. That's good.
Yes.
Brent, any comments?
Um I'll be curious how the equity section you were talking about is built out. Um I think, you know, just the conversation especially about language access the last handful of years and what um components the uh CEP might incorporate um aspects of that. But I don't know, um I don't know, it's more of a general document than a specific, so I don't know if there'd be a subsection that kind of gets into that or um any best practices, or if it is more appropriate to live entirely outside of it. So just curious about that aspect.
The, yeah. Yeah, I know, I know Paul's been working on like language access processes and procedures. Um and so uh I'll be talking more with 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 Paul about that approach and and where this document fits when it's finished. Uh but yeah, I think that the equity piece is something that we'll need to um to have more conversations about um and 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 highlight, uh just to make sure that uh the 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 goals and objectives are being evenly distributed.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Okay, what else you have, uh Rebi, about the uh about this comprehensive?
Okay.
Covered most of it?
Um so that's the um, that's the, that's the draft schedule, and that's the approach that I'm thinking. Um I think the last two items under discussion is the title. I think that was, that was something that, I know you were curious about during the last meeting. Um talking to Paul about this, I think when I sent out my email with the meeting materials, I we were kind of like, let's just keep it simple. I think we uh we came up with, what was it? The twenty twenty-seven City of Winuski Comprehensive Plan Vermont's Opportunity City?
What Vermont's Opportunity City?
That's our, our motto.
Yeah, but do we need to have it? Can't it be the plan?
I don't, I don't think we need it in the title.
Yeah, I don't think we need it either.
I mean, I think simply
Yeah, we're trying to be simple, right?
Yeah.
If you wanna like or put, you can just put the the logo on like, you know, like
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's, I think that was the subtitle. It's like somewhere underneath that just says Vermont's.
Again, let's just keep simplifying.
Yeah.
It doesn't really
You can just put it on the letter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds good.
We'll make T-shirts.
And what's the motto that Sally came up with? One square mile of fun and excitement or something?
Is that another tag you wanna add on to Vermont's Opportunity City?
Yeah, one square mile of of whatever. I have to find out from Sally what the the exact term that she came up with.
It used to be like small city, big heart.
That's cute.
Right.
Let's go back to that.
I agree. We went from that to this.
Too buzzy.
I know. We, small city, big heart, Mike. That was like used a lot before we rebranded.
Yeah.
And yeah.
That's great. Let's go back to that. I'm gonna make a
Be cool T-shirts, actually.
Of course it would.
Yeah.
Okay, Rebi, if that's all, we can move on.
Um yeah, the last thing is with the vision statements, um is I guess I'll defer to you, Mike, on whether you want to talk about that now, or whether you wanna you all wanna like take a minute to to review that that and then come back during an October meeting to to workshop a bit and to to discuss whether it's still valid or whether there needs to be some some changes to it.
Yeah, I mean, wasn't that uh developed by the city council? Brent, I'll ask you if that's the case. Seems to me that
This was
Yeah, it's, it's been a while. I'll have somebody visit this year. I would, I would imagine that it would be collaborative.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be collaborative in the end anyways, so I'll probably be asking the same question of you, Brent, next week. It's like, here's the vision statement. What do you think? So it's it's more of a, I'm gonna be presenting this vision statement to all the committees and boards too, asking if they have any uh suggestions for revisions, if any. Um and then bring that back to you in December, so we can come back with a a a working vision statement for all four uh areas of the plan.
So we, maybe we can put Abby's comment, Winuski, the small city with a big heart, will continue to be livable.
Continue what?
Oh, just the rest of that thing. Continue to be livable, diverse, and affordable community, Brent. We're all good. I I I'm, I'm jesting. No one picked up on it, so I guess it wasn't very anyway, anyway. Yeah, I think, I think let's, yeah, let's see what we hear from other folks, and we can think about it ourselves and and go from there.
Okay, okay.
Good.
Then that's all I have for this item.
Okay.
Yeah, but if you have any comments, questions, in the meantime, you're you're welcome to email me about the the draft plan.
Great. Let's move to city updates, and uh I I know the mayor's out of town, I think. Isn't that right, uh, Rebi? And she tells she's gonna be out of town?
Yeah.
So I don't, Brent, Brent, I don't know if you have anything that you wanna u- update us from the council or?
Um I think, hopefully you all have heard the news by now that um the mayor is has announced that she will be stepping down effective after the council meeting on September fifteenth. Um this, so as um the next steps that happen, uh Thomas Renner as the deputy mayor will step in um for the interim from now until March. At which point, though, uh the March election will um include the one-year seat for the remainder of the mayor's term. Um and then uh with Thomas stepping into the mayoral role um in September, that leaves an open council seat that we will be discussing on Tuesday's council meeting. Um how uh we wanna go about filling it um and timing for filling that. So that'll be on the agenda for um this coming Tuesday. So I think that's the most significant. There are definitely a lot of opportunities to get out and celebrate downtown this uh this next month, so you know, encourage folks to to go out, meet and greet with um your neighbors and friends and uh support our downtown businesses.
And Main Street businesses.
Absolutely. Downtown, I was related, correlated, the gateway, the gateway businesses, yes.
There you go.
Main Street will very much appreciate that as well.
Yeah. Great. Thanks, Brent. Uh and Ruth isn't here, so I guess we have no updates from that. So, Rebi, I'll throw it at you.
Uh huh. Okay, uh the big one is the Armory. So the Armory was originally scheduled to be in front of the DRB for Sketch Plan uh last week, but the DRB didn't have a forum, so that has been postponed to September eighteenth. Um the Sketch Plan uh shows uh thirty units, um all of them three-bedroom units, uh portable units, uh twenty-four units within uh six-unit buildings. So there'd be four six-unit buildings on the northern part of the parcel. And then on the southern part of the parcel, there would be three duplexes. So in total, thirty units across the one-and-a-half-ish acres of the Armory parcel.
All three-bedroom?
All three-bedroom.
And the duplexes are owner, will be owner-occupied?
Yeah, from my understanding, yes, yeah.
Those will be for sale then?
Yeah.
And the rest will be apartments.
Yes.
How many were the for sale?
Six, yeah. So so the conceptual Sketch Plan is up on the city website. It's under the um the August DRB meeting materials. Um and alongside with my staff notes for that. Um but they will be, but the the project uh team will be doing a presentation on it during the 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 September eighteenth meeting. Um and at that point, it's Sketch Plan, so I encourage anybody to attend and and provide comments to to the project team. Uh if you're not able to attend, then you can always email me, and I would share that with the DRB and with the project team accordingly. Um and this is sort of an open, open forum at this point with Sketch Plan, so um the more feedback that they hear, the better. Um and and then from there, they'll take it, uh do their changes, revisions accordingly, and then move forward with the process and submit a formal application.
Are there any issues with their proposal that conflict with the current zoning? Cause that's, isn't that our uh, is that an RB zone?
Uh it's RC.
Is it? RC, yes.
Is it? Yes.
Really?
Yes. Or no, R, not R, sorry. I think the letters confused. RA.
RA is like most residential.
Yes, yes. RA, my mistake. Yes. Um so, yeah, so in my yeah, in my review of it, um so far, uh in terms of dimensional requirements, they're on track. Um there are uh a number of items that I need more clarification on that I'm only going to get once they provide engineering to to the project. Um right now, it's mainly very sketchy and architectural, so um so it's eh, they're on track, but I can't give a de- definitive answer and say yes or no, uh whether they are or not. Um their goal is to be in full conformance with the current zoning. Um they're not planning for any waivers, any modifications to to the zoning to make this project go forward.
And and six units are allowed because they're doing three-bedroom priority housing?
Yep, under priority housing, they are allowed.
Rebi, are they still looking at planned unit development?
Yep, so this would be a a planned unit development and a subdivision. So they're, as a result, looking to create four lots. So all of the the six-unit buildings would be on one lot, and then the duplexes would be on on respective lots.
Thank you for that. And and you said that the RV meeting is September or what?
September eighteenth.
Eighteen.
Yep.
What time do they meet?
They meet at they usually meet. Let me check. What did I put down?
I think it's six, six.
I I wanna say
Six or six thirty.
Exactly, that's what it is.
Which one?
Yeah. Just like the districts, RA or RC? Oh no.
It looks like the canceled one was at six thirty, so
Yeah, so, yeah, so it'll be at six thirty.
On the what, on the eighteenth?
On the eighteen, yep.
Okay. Anything else, Rebi?
Um yeah, so EV charging uh planning is still moving steadily along. We're still collecting input. If you haven't filled out the survey yet, please do. Uh I'll be tabling for that um at the farmer's market in a couple weeks. Um just to gather more input on uh EV charging and where people want to see more EV charging. Uh and then I'll provide an update to the Municipal Infrastructure Commission sometime in September on that project. Um it's swimming along, it's chugging along pretty well. Um and then, um oh yeah, so next on, during the next council meeting, um council will be holding their public hearing on inclusionary housing. Um so uh that's happening on Tuesday at uh six in in council chambers or online. Um I think that about covers everything that I can think of.
Okay. I had a question with the library. What's happening with the library? I had a question with the library. What's happening with the library? I saw a thing about it a while back. Who cares? It's just kind of related to these projects.
Yeah, from what I'm aware of, their project team is still working on the design of it. I've mainly been in con- in contact with the architects and and engineers for that project. And I still, so they're still working on 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 the design elements for that.
There's no like TPD for construction starting?
I I haven't received a bill, a permit application yet, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
Can I ask another development question?
Sure.
Um, what's the the little house next to Wunuski Organics? What's going on with that? On East Allen?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm aware that Wunuski Organics bought that house. They they didn't make any exterior modifications, so it didn't require zoning. It was just a building permit. They did some improvements to siding. They did some improvements to the interiors. They're looking to have their offices in there. And that's, yeah, that's mainly what I'm aware of.
And then, has anybody seen 12 La Fountain now that it's been developed? Anybody look at that? It's just interesting to see sort of what our zoning. 12 La Fountain is the one that's a triplex now. They took advantage of some of ours sometimes, so they'll a lot.
12 Franklin?
Sorry, what was I saying?
La Fountain.
Yeah.
12 Franklin.
So, yeah, I encourage the commission to go and look at it, just to see sort of like what the the final form of our new code allows.
Yep, yeah, that structure is pretty much up. The siding's up, the roof's up. I think they're they're getting close to, I I feel like they're getting closer to being done. We just need to work on the interiors, it seems like, so.
I I saw I saw the owner last week and he was hoping it'd be ready in a month.
Are those garages? Like, I don't know how cars are going to be able to turn into those garages.
The, yeah, the ground floors are are garages and then two floors above for for three-bedroom units in a in a triplex.
Yeah, it's interesting to see. And then I guess the other, there was, the DRB was looking at like another. PUD in this area of town. Did that end up moving forward? I know we brought it up at like a couple meetings ago, but it was under review.
That's the one above the tracks, Abbey on Weaver Pond now, Weaver Street.
Yeah, it might have been.
Weaver, so Weaver was.
Yeah. Yeah, we were right next to the, right above the city hall.
Okay, so that one was denied by the DRB back in, I wanna say May. That decision became finalized. So that that project is, I think they're they're gonna revise and resubmit, from my understanding, if if they do wanna pursue it. But the original design that they presented earlier this year was denied. And then other smaller PUD projects that have been approved. There's one on St. Peter's Street, in which the property owner is looking to put a duplex behind an existing duplex. That was approved by the DRB, I think in June, I think that's when the decision was finalized. The the DRB heard that application in May, so that was approved through priority housing. And that has three-bedroom.
Through priority.
Yeah, through priority housing has three-bedroom. That those are two units with three-bedroom units, so. And then. What else is there? Yeah, those are the main ones that have been PUD priority housing objects that the DRB has reviewed.
Yeah, it's just good to keep in, keep an eye on what's happening and how that code is actually working or not.
Yeah, yes. There's definitely a lot, a lot of interest. So, yeah, I think people are interested in those lot coverage allowances.
Yeah, well, I think our commitment to making sure that there's like an incentive for to build the housing we want seems. To be working somewhat.
Yeah.
It's not just housing, it's the type of housing we're looking for.
Yep, yeah.
Okay.
I had something else you wanted to. So I attended the ADU, you know, we had that.
Yeah.
That opening, which was really interesting. And I actually took a lot of notes and I didn't know if I could. Pass these to you as a private citizen and then you can serve with the planning commission or, do you know what I'm saying?
Mike?
Go for it.
I mean, I'm not gonna do it right now. I'll do it after this and maybe it's something we could put on an agenda even to talk about.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I think that's fine, Sarah.
Okay, because there's a lot of really good takeaways, I thought, from meeting with that people, so I wanted to. Which I should have done, but I didn't get to.
In fact, we put it on the agenda, Sarah, you can you can be the person to present it along with Revy.
Thanks, Mike.
No, I'm kidding. Whatever.
Okay.
Okay, any other business? Next meeting, Revy?
September 11th, stacking them up.
And I will not be here. So Abby, you're gonna be around.
We chair after all.
But you're chair, chair worship. Going somewhere fun, Mike?
What's that?
You going somewhere fun?
Going across the pond.
Oh.
On a river cruise, yeah.
Really fun.
From Switzerland, we're gonna head up in Amsterdam.
Oh, so you're going down, going down the Rhine, basically?
Down the Rhine, yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Never done it before. I've only heard good things, so.
Their advertisements make it look really nice.
I'll I'll report back in October. Uh, any other business? Hearing none. Do folks wanna adjourn the meeting at 7:28? Holy cow, it's a record.
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I can second that.
All right. All in favor? Please say aye. Both, okay. Thanks, everyone. Have a great Labor Day weekend.
No, I think, I think you can see. What the thing that's interesting to me that really sticks out is the height, but the height is not new.